I don't think I need to pick him out. Although he works shift work, sometimes he was coming home. And it's like hey. Need a brewski. But yeah, people.
He does it.
And then I tried and I was like, oh.
That was. Hey, let me call the order. Our city council meeting for November fourteenth. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one and eight under God. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everyone. Uh, roll call Cindy.
Honorable Mayor Grover.
Present.
Councilmember Overhauser.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Present.
Councilmember Bartels.
Present.
Councilmember Guard.
Present.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Posthuma.
Present.
Councilmember Weisman is not present.
No, but I do have a request to excuse her for this evening.
Second.
Motion is second to excuse Councilmember Wise- Weisman from this meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. She is excused. Okay, moving on. Citizen comments. It's an opportunity for the public to comment to our city council members. Is there anybody? Nobody signed up, but um, this is an opportunity for anybody in the crowd here or on Zoom. Anybody? Anybody want to make comment to our council? How about on Zoom? Anybody? Anybody raising their hand over there? You know? Going once. Going twice. Okay, let's move on. Minutes, uh, October twenty fourth, uh, twenty twenty-three regular city council meeting minutes. You've had an opportunity to review those. If there are no corrections, then entertain a motion to approve them.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second to approve our October twenty-fourth council meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Thank you. Our minutes are approved. Vouchers and payroll Cindy.
Um, total vouchers of one million, four hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. There were some other payables, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and five cents for a total of one million, four hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. And we have payroll for a million, ninety-four thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Your honor, the finance committee reviewed these items. I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to second to approve the vouchers and payroll as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you Cindy. Vouchers and payroll are approved. Did not have any small contracts or claims for damages, which is good. But we do have an information item. I'd like to introduce Mark and is Deborah on Zoom with us?
She is.
To give us a some discussion on our twenty-twenty-four legislative session session preview.
So Mayor and Council, I'd like to introduce Deborah Mengia. She is our lobbyist over in Olympia. She has fabulous work for us and I've asked her to come tonight to talk about the two thousand twenty-four legislative session, which is a short session. Um, we're going to talk about uh, kind of what to expect out of this session and uh, we'll also have a discussion about um, anything that you might want to add to our legislative agenda. Uh, as we work with Deborah collaboratively to come up with it. So we'll have it ready to go when the session starts. So with that, Deborah, please take it over.
Hi Deborah.
Hi Mayor, how are you? Nice to nice to see everyone. Um, thank you Mark, appreciate that. And um, just as quick background, I am the state lobbyist for the city. I've had the privilege of working with the city since twenty seventeen. Prior to starting Capital Consulting, I was the governmental relations director for a statewide trade association that represented large forest landowners in the state. And then prior to that, I worked in state government, um, including ten years at the State Department of Natural Resources. Where I was the Habitat Conservation Plan Manager, responsible for getting a NHCP in place for state forest practices activities for uh, private forest landowners. So um, privileged working with the city, with Mark, with all the staff there, with all of you. So thank you. And so as Mark said, we um, are moving into a short session. It's a sixty-day session. And um, the in the in the odd years, the legislature has a long session where they develop their two-year biennial budgets for operating capital and transportation. And in the even years, it's a supplemental budget year. So they make changes to that budget and they work on additional policy issues. Um, and also twenty-twenty-four is going to be a significant election year. And um, so all of the House, half the Senate and the statewide offices are up for election. So it's going to be a busy year next year. Um, so we are um, expecting that the economic, the state economic and revenue forecast council will release its quarterly report uh, next week. And then once that happens, the governor will use that to um, work to develop his proposed supplemental budget. And we expect his budgets to be released the week of December eleventh. And then throughout the course of the legislative session, the House and Senate will release their proposed budgets um, shortly after the revenue forecast comes out in February. Though, all of the the bills that were introduced last session that um, were not signed, didn't go through the process, weren't signed by the governor. They will automatically be reintroduced next session. And we know some of those bills are going to be active. Um, and then in addition, the legislature may be dealing, um, if if there there are some ballot measures that are out there that are gathering signatures and some of them are pretty significant. And so if they, their initiatives to the legislature, if those um, do meet the threshold requirement, the legislature will decide how they want to deal with that. And if they decide that they want to come up with an alternative proposal, I expect that a lot of their time will be taken up with that. So session starts on January eighth and it's scheduled to end on March seventh. So there will be a lot to do in a short amount of time. I'm just real briefly, I wanted to mention that um, that Association of Washington Cities has four big priorities. Um, and I know that these will be of interest to Cheney. One is on public safety. They're working on legislation to allow council manic authority for the local option, public safety sales tax, um, to give greater flexibility for revenue. And um, it so give council manic authority for this. And um, so if you want more details, I'm I'm happy to give you that. It would give the option of doing it council manically. You could still go out to the voters if you wanted to. And some of the revenue would be used for things like expanding access to state mandated training, increasing the BLEA classes and expanding new regional academies. Another one of their priorities is revising the the one percent property tax cap and tying it to inflation and population growth factors not to exceed three percent. There were a couple of bills that were introduced last session. They didn't make it over the line. Um, AWC is part of a coalition of other stakeholder groups. So um, cities, counties, fire districts, ports, hospital districts, labor, all working together to try and get that over the line um, in the next session. So we'll have to, we'll have to see if they're willing to take a big tax vote in a big election year. Um, and also continuing investing in infrastructure, continue funding for the public works assistance account. Helping cities with their operation and maintenance uh, for infrastructure, things like um, drinking water, wastewater, bond, local transportation needs specifically around preservation and maintenance. And I'll, I'll touch on transportation again in a second. Um, and one of the the big ones um, that AWC is also going to be working on is seeking direct distributions from the Climate Commitment Act revenue. And we know that the revenues for the state's cap and bus program have greatly exceeded expectations at this point. I think they are estimating they might be a billion dollars more than they thought they would be. And so um, those those revenues go into all three of the budgets, operating capital and transportation, designed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, um, promote climate resiliency, um, repair environmental harm that was has been done, those kinds of things. So um, there's going to be, there's going to be a lot focused on that next session. And then behavioral health, providing greater access to behavioral health services and facilities, helping with workforce issues, helping communities establish alternative response programs like um, co-responder programs, diversion programs, things like that, that will help individuals who are experiencing behavioral health challenges. There will be legislation um, that defines co-response. It creates viability protections and it funds training for those that are involved in co-response, um, clinical teams with uh, first response systems, fire, police, nine-one-one, local governments, that kind of thing. Um, and Mark, I can pause at any time or I can keep going if you want me to.
Go ahead and keep going.
Okay, all right. So some of the key policy things that the city will be very interested in. Uh, we are working with Senator Short. She will be introducing legislation. She's planning on pre-filing it. Pre-filing starts next month. And that will clarify her bill that Cheney worked very hard on. Um, a couple of years ago, Senate Bill fifty-five ninety-three that allows a county to revise the urban growth area to accommodate identified patterns of development. So we've been talking with Senator Short about that and um, we'll be working on that. There's, there were a lot of housing bills that were discussed last session, some passed, some didn't, some will definitely be back. We're already getting um, some draft legislation. I know that your staff are looking at that and they're providing comments. We're talking with legislators. Um, we're talking about the transit oriented development legislation, whether or not the city would um, have to be complying with that. And uh, AWC is actually working on putting together a proposal around community centered development. And I know that um, your folks are looking at that too. That is something that would, it's intended to create a a full-service, mixed-income, walkable neighborhood with higher density. That includes affordable and market rate housing and as well as retail and commercial activities that provide both jobs and services. And under that proposal, uh, local governments would get access to um, state authorized incentives to facilitate this community centered development if you met certain zoning requirements. So that's still in discussion. We haven't seen a bill dropped yet, but we're expecting that soon. There could be uh, legislation around rent stabilization. It looks like the the initiative in Tacoma might pass, which which may or may not inspire more activity at the state level. There will continue to be discussions around housing affordability. There was a bill that did not pass last session, um, that would have modified the state and local REIT and it would have um, brought more revenue in for affordable housing. Um, so there there's gonna, there's still gonna be a lot of housing issues. In terms of transportation, that's also going to be something that's going to be discussed. The uh, legislature did pass a transportation package, uh, sixteen billion. And a lot of that came from climate commitment funds and then the gas tax and then fees and things like that. The revenues for the gas tax continue to decline and they will continue to decline. And so the the Climate Commitment Act funds are not going to be enough to fill that hole. So the legislature is going to have to figure out what they're going to do. Um, there's, there's, there are definitely needs in terms of preservation and maintenance. And then they also need to support local governments too. So um, we expect to see that uh, a lot of discussion around transportation revenue and how that's going to work. As well as revenue again from the Climate Commitment Act. Um, there's going to be some legislation that while some legislation is already out there drafts, um, talking about what can be done with this revenue should um, should there be legislation that would modify the compliance schedule because the auction um, allowances are going for so much more than they thought they would that maybe we should tie it to California and their um, auction prices are about half of what ours are. So that it would um, not be such an impact on on consumers. There's going to be legislation that um, would ask that the oil industry be more transparent with how they set their prices. There's going to be proposals to spend that money in a lot of different ways. So that's something to keep in mind. Um, there's going to be the, there were a few bills that were out last session around police accountability and law enforcement. They will be back. And um, the coalition, the Coalition for Police Accountability um, is pushing for those bills. And the ACLU supports a couple of them. So um, we'll, we'll have to see what happens with those. Um, there will be other environmental bills around recycling and packaging. So um, there's, it's going to be a busy session. There's gonna, there's gonna be a lot there. And um, again, I just have to say how appreciative I am um, for your staff and how responsive they are and how they've really helped shape some of this legislation. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Deborah. Anybody have any questions for Deborah?
First off, I'll, I'll thank you for your service and your attention to everything you do for us there in Olympia. Helps when you have somebody over there with your ear to the door. But uh, I guess the one for me, every time there's a session, be it long or short, I just wish for them to do no more harm to local government. Uh, but in that one, do you sense Deborah, uh, I mean, there's been, you know, attempts to intrude into local government land use regulation by the state. And they did a uh, number on us the last session. Do you do you sense the momentum to continue with that? They thinking that more and more housing on, um, single family, no matter what size it is, is the key to solving homelessness or or is that, did they spend all their energy on that the last session?
I I do think that there will be more housing related bills around um, housing density and housing affordability. So um, Cheney's been a a good partner in talking with legislators to help them understand the impacts to a smaller area. A lot of these areas are focused on the Puget Sound, bigger cities, um, like Spokane. And where they're really, you know, targeting around, um, especially like transit oriented development. And so I think when when we see the language and we know it can be interpreted as a way that it might impact Cheney, we have discussions with legislators. And they're open to hearing from us about, you know, what the concerns are, what the impacts would be. And um, potentially mitigating those. So I do think that there will continue to be legislation. And we just need to help them understand what it would mean to the city.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I I wanted to echo what Councilmember Schmidt said. Thank you for your support of Cheney, Deborah, and your service over these last six years. We appreciate that.
Well, it's been my honor. Thank you.
Mark, did you have anything else?
Uh, no. Uh, other than i-if you do have some questions uh, about any pending legislation, any drafts that you see out there, please uh, let the mayor or I uh, know. Deborah and uh, you know, we'll, we'll get you the insight that that um, Deborah might be here over there in Olympia.
Thanks Mark. Thank you Deborah.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our action items. Our first one is a public hearing. I'm going to open a public hearing for the twenty-twenty-four budget for the light and public works departments. And I think I want to kick off Steve first, right? Go ahead. Come on up Steve.
I get to share. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, good evening, Council, Mayor, guests. Uh, the twenty-twenty-four light department budget is fourteen million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. This is a higher number than what we've seen in a couple of years because we are incorporating our reserves and a million dollar operational fund. So, kind of think of it as a a checkbook. What's the balance at the beginning of the year? What's the balance at the end of the year? That's about as simple as I can explain that. And the light department is an enterprise fund, which means all the expenditures are paid through through the revenues that are generated or received within that fund. So uh, for general questions I heard before, we do not receive anything from the general fund. It was.
Space bar.
Base. There we go. So our mission statement is to provide the best possible service to our electric customers at the lowest practical cost. Um, how we do that is that we have a great staff. Um, here's our organizational chart. Uh, Todd and I share five uh, staff members here. The percentages are uh, what are funded by the light department. With uh, Dan Curly as our office operations. He's been with the city six years. Shane works with the BPA Conservation Rebate Program. He's been with the city for ten years. Susan Beeman, she only does about twenty percent of our work, but she's been with us for thirty-nine years. Uh, if you go to the left, Anita Wentz has been with us for sixteen years and Karen Gemmell, thirty years. I think it's kind of important to show you that you got some longevity, some experience here. Um, if you go to the top right, we have Travis Billigmeyer. He's our foreman for the light crew, seventeen years. And then down below him's rest of the light crew, Bill Lathrop at sixteen years. Jerry Hoppy's a meter technician. He's been here thirty-seven years. And then Matt Holling on the left, there's ten years. Robert Fraley's our new apprentice. He's been here three years. He'll be a journeyman here in February. He's got about a hundred and twenty hours left of hot work, which is the high-power work that we don't really have. And we'll farm him up to a vesta for four to six weeks to get those hours in. And then Will Baron Cott's been with us twelve years and Dan Holden, twenty years.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, good evening, councilor, mayor, guests. Uh. The twenty twenty four light department project is fourteen million nine hundred and thirty one thousand two hundred dollars. This is a higher number than what we've seen. In a couple of years because we are incorporating our reserves and a million dollar operational fund. So, kinda think of it as a, a checkbook. What's the balance at the beginning of the year? What's the balance at the end of the year? That's about as simple as I can explain that. And the light department is an enterprise fund, which means. All the expenditures are paid through, through the revenues that are generated or received within that fund. So. Uh, for general questions I heard before, we do not receive anything from the general fund.
Hit the space bar.
There we go. So our mission statement is to provide the best possible service. To our electric customers at the lowest practical cost. Um, how we do that is that we have a great staff. Um, here's our organizational chart. Uh, Todd and I share five uh, staff members here. The percentages are. Uh, what are funded by the light department with uh, Dan Curly as our office operations. He's been with the city six years. Shane works with the BPA Conservation Rebate Program. He's been with the city for ten years. Susan Beeman, she only does about twenty percent of our work, but she's been with us for thirty nine years. If you go to left, Anita Went has been with us for sixteen years and Karen Gemmell, thirty years. I think it's kinda important to show you that you got some longevity, some experience here. Um, if you go to the top right, we have Travis Billigmeyer. He's our foreman for the light crew seventeen years. And then down below him's rest of the light crew, Bill Lathrop at sixteen years. Jerry Hoppy's a meter technician. He's been here thirty seven years. And then Matt Holling on the left, there's ten years. Robert Fraley's our new apprentice. He's been here three years. He'll be a journeyman here in February. He's got about a hundred and twenty hours left of hot work, which is the high power work that we don't really have. And we'll farm him up to a Vista for four to six weeks to get those hours in. And then Will Baron Cott's been with us twelve years and Dan Holden twenty years. So our capital assets, uh, as you can see, we have two substations with uh, seven feeders. Eighty-nine miles of overhead lines, fifty-eight underground, over a thousand pole top transformers. Three hundred and forty-nine pad mounts. Those are the big green boxes you see in neighborhoods. Uh. Twenty-two fifty-nine power poles. You can see the streetlights, trucks, tools, equipment, and then we maintain city hall and the utilities building. So budgeted revenues for twenty twenty-four, uh, the line share comes from our residential purchases. Uh, then eastern and commercial, then base charges. Public authorities are your schools, uh, municipality buildings, uh, fees, rents, interests, and then industrial. And there you see the million dollars for operating funds and the three point five for the beginning fund balance. If you add those up and subtract them from that total, you're gonna get a budgeted revenue of ten million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And a different view, the pie chart, you can see how big a piece of pies they are with the fund balance at thirty percent residential at twenty-eight. They make up. Close to sixty percent of the uh, budget with uh, base charges and commercial. And eastern coming between twelve and nine percent and the others around four to three percent. So budget expenditures, always a good budget. The revenues match the expenditures and vice versa. So. Glad it worked out. Um, you can see wages and benefits, close to two million. Purchase power, largest expense we have at six point three. Uh, the maintenance and operations, to maintain the distribution system, two million. And then you can see once again the operating and ending fund balance. And if you were to add those up and subtract them, our expenditures are ten million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. So we're exceeding our revenues by four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Things have gotten costlier. And part of that is because the rate increases. That five, I have five point six percent gave us about an extra five thou- five hundred thousand this year. Uh, so the rates are starting to help balance this a bit. We're operating a deficit. COVID took a big hit. Uh, eastern students leaving, it was just uh, light did take a hit here and I'll, I'll show you that here in a little bit. Budget expenditures in the pie chart, you can see how they are, uh, with, once again, power purchase at forty-two percent. So for twenty twenty-four, large expenditures. In the budget have Tanis AMI meters, three hundred and ten thousand. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we authorized a purchase of six thousand of them. Fourteen forty or a hundred and twenty, which is a pallet every month, I think was for next fifty months. So we're on schedule with that. Um, transformers, we ordered, I think it was one, close to one point seven million. We've had about. Just a little over seven hundred thousand delivered. We're receiving some more in December and then January, which will be on this. The twenty twenty-three budget, but expect about close to nine hundred thousand next year to be delivered. And then Cheney substation plants, that's engineering plants, and that's based upon a two point five million dollar build. In twenty twenty-five, engineering specs usually take anywhere from ten to fifteen percent of the project. So that'll be a, a, a big price um, for that job. So I wanted to give you a picture here, historic. So this goes back to twenty thirteen. Revenues are blue, expenditures are red. Uh, you can see from twenty thirteen. We're expenditures exceeded revenues, but then you did several years of building that cash reserve. I think that was pretty much the focus for, I showed up in twenty nineteen and everything died. Just kidding. But in twenty nineteen, um, that was a healthy return, but then we hit the COVID uh, period there, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, revenues declined. Once again, rates were down, materials started going up, less work was done. We didn't sell as much with the university closing. And then in twenty twenty-one, uh, we operate just a little bit of a deficit there. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, we about matched it. Um, and then twenty twenty-three, right now, that's the actuals. Where we're at right now. Uh, if I can stay within a little bit above the expenditures, I feel like I'm doing pretty good on that. Uh, but you can see at the end of the year, I told you we'd have four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar deficits, so that will have to come out of cash reserves. So field accomplishments, um, though I'm in the, replaced twenty-seven poles, uh, one hundred and eighty-seven work orders. That's for. Citizens and builders and businesses, that's them requesting work from us, sixteen capital projects as in. Uh, line replacement, rebuilds, transformers replacements. We had sixty-five after hours call out by Doppler that dispatch systems working fantastic. We really like it and I think uh. The police like it too, really alleviated line nine-one-one calls. And then our substation reclosure controls, we had those installed. They're finally tested out here at the beginning of the year and they had to be reprogrammed. Which was good because we wanted to do that check to make sure everything was uh, working well. And we found out that it wasn't the correct settings. Nothing harmful, but it just needs to balance the right loads through that system. Oh, I already jumped ahead of that. I'm sorry about that. Did I skip a page on you guys?
Yeah, office. Office accomplishment.
Sorry about that. Okay, uh, office accomplishment. Couple agreements, mutually agreements with Eastern Western University and then a separate one with inland power to give assistance in times of emergency at one time. Eastern didn't have any linemen or they were down to one. They couldn't perform any work. They asked for our assistance, uh. Before we could provide it, they hired someone else in, but inland, you know, with the fires, they're always calling us to come assist and we're glad to help. Four Lakes Engineering Service Agreement, you'll see that tonight. I brought that to council for approval. That's a, an agreement. It's the Vista Four Lakes Substation that we share with them. And inland has a, a switching bus there. So currently, if we were to do, or if this is to do maintenance on that substation, they would shut down power while that power. Comes to Four Lakes, goes straight through that substation, then it feeds the Cheney substation. You cut that power off, Cheney's that substation has no power. That means the city has no power. This is a, a redundancy to build a bypass around the substation. So when they shut it off to the substation. Power supplied and it's literally three poles and a couple of switches. And it connects back to that feeder line back to the substation. So we can shut down Four Lakes completely and the city can be powered by Cheney. Uh, previously, several years ago, they did maintenance and it shut the power off to the city for eight hours, which. It's, it's not a good message assigned. For the bad guys. Uh, wrote net meeting, metering policy that has to do with self-generating, mostly solar power of people's houses. And it really got simple after I wrote all that, uh, because the AMI meters we have. They function as what they call a demand meter. Councilwoman Overhouser went through this experience. Wasn't a pleasant one, a long delay and it was difficult process because. They, people, uh. The solar company would come in. Get the customer to purchase their product and then they would install. Then they come to us and say, turn us on and we'd say. How did you install? We have certain requirements. And they say, well, we install it just like this city over here. Well, we're not that city over there. So we required that uh, a disconnect switch. We required a separate uh, production meter. And it had to be within three feet. So it was, it was kinda complicated and took a couple of visits by our part. Work with the contractor, make sure it's installed. Well, now with the new AMI meters, we put the AMI meter in and it does the uh, same system. Uh, performance as a production meter and a regular meter. So now they can go in and install and they can call us. And if they install it correctly, they'll have their, their gray box with the disconnect switch going to our meter. We'll make the meter connect. And that one meter does the function of all. So uh, it makes it very easy. Uh, the one-shot policy. Wrote one of those so that we have direction on when do we go to one shot. And that is the setting of the substation. Once it's tripped once, it stays off. Normal procedure is that it trips once, it tries to reset itself two more times. And the thought behind it is a branch isn't aligned, it trips a fault. System resets and it happens in split seconds and it'll kick the branch off, then all of a sudden it'll sense we're fine. In a fire, if a tree knocks a line, it goes down on the ground. We don't want that power line trying to reset spark three times and catching a fire. So that's what the one-shot policy is. Uh, got the geolog- geological test on the Cheney substation uh, in anticipation of the renovation in twenty twenty-five. Talked to the engineer today. He said that that test uh, paid dividends in spades because the soil is bad. And it was soil that was brought in to build the parking lot. So we're gonna have to remove that, which is an additional expense. Better to find out now. Than a change order during the, the project. Uh, and the last one is. Patera, we had a contract with, has now transformed, sold itself to Zipley and a tran- and they're doing a transition uh, expansion. Nothing has changed much, but they're still hanging a lot of fiber. So. And we went through that. So here's some uh, pictures of the guys at work doing pole replacements with the equipment. Uh, the first one, you can see it looks real thick at the base because they cut the top off of one pole, place it on right beside it. Get everything transferred and then remove the second pole. Uh, this is the vault that exploded near the bus garage. I think a lot of people heard it. That's a three hundred and fifty pound concrete lid that blew it up in the air and it, it settled down in there. So they were on the job really quick with that one. Uh, here's some streetlight replacement due to vandalism, just shooting out the lights. And here's, here's a really good one for AMI meters. This story. So we had an AMI meter there. Um, the owner of the building had a squatter tenant. They didn't pay their electric bill and uh, so Jerry from his desk with the AMI meter, click of a button. Shut his power off. Well, the guy says, huh, I'm not gonna let that go. So he took our meter off, he took the cover off, he pulled everything out of there. And if you look in there, those silver rings. He built those rings to fit in those, uh, what are they called? Uh, meter lugs. So. That way, the power's flowing to the house and he's getting free power. But if you were to touch that, you wouldn't let go and it would kill you. So what happened is when he pulled that meter off, Jerry got an alarm on the system of that meter at that address. And he knew that there's power disconnected from it and he drove right out there and discovered that. So that, that was huge. That, that really, it could have possibly saved someone's life, you know, just some kid going, I've never seen that before and go touch it. So you have the remote turn off, guy vandalizes it, we get the alarm, he goes out and shuts it off. It was, is a great thing. So line clearance, we just finished our fourth year and we had spent sixty thousand a year on that. Uh, decided that is not enough. We're, we're catching up a little bit, but that buys us, we burn about fifteen thousand dollars a week on that. Two thousand dollars a day. So we wanted more time out there um, for them for this, the twenty twenty-four and that's in the budget. Uh, we built four hundred and seventy-five feet of security fencing to keep the railroad. Uh, separate from our property and the people crossing the railroad tracks. But that's where the intrusions have been. Uh, we haven't had intrusion in a while, but then we also put in the cameras, got those installed recently and we'll get those wired up shortly. A hundred and twenty new LED lamps in the cold storage. Uh, we, we even got a thousand dollar rebate on that to the energy, BPA energy program. So total cost is about four thousand dollars. And then we upgraded the outside lights to, to photocells. So they'll come on during the day, night shutdown. Restriped the parking lot for three thousand dollars. And then the meter technician, he never gets talked about. So. He gets his own slides. So we actually have about closer to sixty-four hundred meters right now. There was only thirty new meter connections this year, not that much construction going on. Um, the executed cut-ins, that's where uh, we're turning the power on, move-ins, moves-outs. Um, and then nine hundred and forty-seven cutouts, those are uh, being requested to turn our power off for whatever purpose. Uh, two thousand one hundred and fourteen door hangers. The, the guys will go out and hang those door hangers. Uh, six hundred and thirty disconnects. Those weren't usually requested. By the customers, uh, three hundred and eighty-two utility locates. So. So the, with the meter tech, he's manages a Tallas AMI fixed network. Right now, we have four collectors out. If the fibers at the Four Lake Station, we're trying to figure out if we have two available fibers, we'll install a fifth collector out there to reach that whole area. Uh, that means we have two more collectors and we have three correct collectors in his office right now. There's a total of seven and uh. They can each handle about twelve hundred meters on them. Eight repeaters, they just repeat the signal. And currently, we have two thousand AMI meters out at houses. But they're picking up. An additional four thousand meters. So one meter can talk to seven to twelve meters and it's a self-healing network. To where if my meter is uh, talking to mics and my meter goes down. Mics will look for someone else to talk to to relay that information. So uh, we're, we're basically reading about fifty-five hundred. Or sixty-five hundred meters with the system right now and it's picking up five hundred of the water meters just by the location. Uh, water meters will increase. Big stumbling block is they have a large metal covers and that block the signal. And then they have some antiquated meters that just won't read through the system. This is what Jerry's screen looks like. So all the green uh, circles are where he has the new meters placed in those neighborhoods. And they reach out and communicate with all those other ones out there. The black ones are the collectors and the repeaters. And usually a red one is that there's something wrong with the signal or it's just starting the choirs and newly placed one takes about three days to acquire. And yellow ones are saying we have some intermittent transmission. We're supposed to be pinging all the time. It's not happening, but we do get reads out of that daily. So what's changed? A big change for this coming year, all our power is coming from BPA. Historically, for about the last decade. Tier two powers purchased from Northwest Utilities Utilities or NICE. Tier one power, BPA supply is about ninety percent of our power. Tier two power. Is a supplemental additional power that we purchase. At one time, you could buy that with NRU and the conglomerate of fifty-seven other utilities. We bank all our orders and they can get a discounted rate. Um, not, not so far anymore. Matter of fact, NRU for this year is laid off their staff for purchasing that because they don't have any purchases. Because you can see the next line, the tier two non-federal rate is going for ninety-six dollars a megawatt. So it's double, more than double the price we can get from BPA. So our average for BPA for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five will be forty-one oh eight, which is a pretty darn good price. Twenty nineteen, we were paying about twenty-eight to twenty-nine dollars. So you have close to a fifty percent increase on the rates there. Therefore, the rate study to match the prices that cover the cost. Um, so our milli- material costs have increased. You know that by the cost of the transformers. Uh, still availability, availability is limited and delivery times are long. Uh, transformers dates are extremely high and delayed. Um, this year, BPA through uh. A program they ha- have called the Reserve Distribution Clause in their contract. To which they can only maintain so much reserves that, that in layman's terms. If they have too much money, they've overcharged us, just like we would here. I mean, they're for profit. Just like we would here. I mean, they're for profit and BPA is an organization. That is hired to manage the dams. The dams are owned by the federal government. And the Army Corps of Engineers and they hired BPA and as a private organization to manage them and maintain them. Well, last year they had a surplus. And in that surplus, their distribution, we got a million bucks out of it, which knocked our price, their bill down about ninety thousand dollars a month. Plus or minus a couple thousand. They just announced three days ago that on November sixteenth, they may award another one for this year. I, about three hours ago, I got a ninety-six page assessment of what that means and there's no way I could decipher that. So I'll wait till the sixteenth and they'll have an indication of what that means to us. So. It looks like everybody's gonna get something, but I don't know what scale it was because I can't remember what the surplus that last year is and I don't know what the surplus is this year. But that will help offset that four hundred thirty-two thousand hour deficit uh for this year. And then we're, the last things that we're really gaining efficiencies on the AMI meters. Uh, what took Jerry usually four to five hours to read all of them. He can read them remotely in about two and a half hours. Any disconnects he does on that meter is a click. Like getting in the vehicle, drive over, pull the meter out, reband it and set it, which is. Probably fifteen, twenty minute per job saves us on that. And like I showed you the detection, the manipulation of the system, the alarm that went on with that. And then, and then we're reading uh one-fifth of uh twenty percent waters meters right now. So twenty twenty-four and keep the eye on uh tier one power and tier two power. Uh, I think it'll be a validated change, but halfway through twenty-four, gotta start looking at twenty-six and twenty-seven. And see what the tier two power does. Um. If it drops significantly, then maybe intercept purchasing some, but historically, we've only done about two megawatts. What's once again is about ten to eleven percent of what we purchase. Uh, BPA rebate, we'll see where that comes from. Uh. Transformers and materials purchases beyond twenty twenty-four. I told Travis, start looking at twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven transformer needs because it's taken two years to get these things. We're gonna be two, three years that way ahead of this. Um, so we'll take a look at that. Uh, requests for qualifications for engineering design for the Cheney substation and improvement or renovation for twenty twenty-five. Uh, hopefully I can get RFQ out by January, February. Maybe get awards sometime in the spring, design completed by the end of the year. And then go out to bid it next January, February for construction of it and hopefully have that built in twenty twenty-five. And then the four leagues bypass engineering, we'll get that done. And it's targeted to get the engineering done here in the next few months and then they'll come back with secondary contract for the build. They said it should be about a hundred to maybe a hundred and fifty thousand tops. I budgeted sixty-seven thousand in the budget for that. That's uh hundred and thirty-five thousand total between inland and the city splitting the build of that uh bypass. So that's it. Oh, no, it isn't. Down the same ice, okay. We have uh two thousand meters in the field. I, I have about a thousand meters in the cold storage. I think it's eight or nine pallets. Um, we'll try to get probably close to twenty-five hundred up this year. Is the goal. Uh. Maintain infrastrit- infrastructure maintenance, replacing poles, wires as necessary, treat the line clearance. Comcast has come to town and they're gonna start hanging fiber. Um, so I have to work closely with them and Zipley. Our, our poles are getting a little bit crowded here now. We have Davis, Lumen, Zipley, Comcast. And wow, the Vista Edge has transitioned, wow. Um, so we have five internet service providers. Uh. Get that RFP for the line clearance in January. Asplund has had it for the last four years. We'll see what happens on that. I, I prefer to do it now, but they can't give me the rate increases for twenty twenty-four, so I have to wait till January to, to put that out. And then we budgeted seventy thousand dollars for the city banner program to once again. Four seasonal banners for the town, for the beautification and, and then Eastern just recently had their uh. We installed their banners that they had purchased here. So now that was the last item, so. Any questions?
Thanks Steve. Any questions for Steve on the light department budget?
No, good, thanks Steve. Yeah, uh. Well, we're seeing a lot of this already, the uh. The one thing I'd like to. I guess food for thought for you to consider is. If we should be starting to budget for some long-term and midterm planning. Attended a workshop on electric vehicles and the grid system and all the impacts. And how long it takes to site an essential facility like a, a new substation type thing and. Similar to what we do in water, so we have, you know, the, those plans. I think we should take a look at doing that for the light department as well. Kind of look out ten, twenty, thirty years from now. I forget what our capacity is. We, we still what at six? Mega watt or something like that for capacity?
Yes, then we're, we're at approximately seventeen. Uh, the tripwire is twenty-five and then when you hit twenty-five, you're into the federal, the FERC. Regulations and a whole different requirements come with that, so. I, I was talking to uh Craig Rippler, Rippler Engineers this morning about uh. Parkside second edition and working with the builder. And I got the request about a comprehensive plan. I know we've been talking about that and I told him my thought was I was gonna try to bundle that. In the Cheney substation buildout, what are we building? Why are we building it? What's it gonna reach? And I said, but that would only cover that substation. I don't know if I can. On that bid, you have a comprehensive one for up in Cheney. And he, he said, well, you probably should keep those separate. So that's a defining thing to hire uh an engineer to go ahead and uh have him tell us. Can and where should we put a substation? When we build this one, what should we build it to? Our, our limitation is that I don't think um a Vista can wheel more than twenty-five megawatts to us. And if that, to exceed that, they have to build out their system. And they just had a meeting that Travis went to and uh. I didn't get to talk to him about it. I don't know if he asked the science questions on that one, how's and why's. Of when they plan on doing that, because we'll be, we'll be beholden to that. To expand even further than that, but. The good thing, that's, that's a thirty-five to forty percent increase on our usage here. Which I think we have room right now contain that at our growth rate, so. But it is something that needs to really be addressed.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have all that out there.
Yes, I agree.
All it takes is a couple of large commercial users, manufacturing, you know, businesses come in, right? That need one or two.
Sure, it could gobble.
Could gobble that rest of it up.
A year from now, could have been, should have, could have, would have, right? So. Yeah, we're even five hundred EV cars.
Yeah, exactly. Very good. Anything else for Steve? This is a public hearing, so before I move on to public works, I do want to open this up to the. To the citizens or anybody on Zoom here that wishes to make a comment or ask questions about the light department budget for twenty twenty-four. Take yourself known. Anybody? I don't see anybody on Zoom. I don't see anybody out in the crowd. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate your time. Well done. And we're still in an open public hearing, so I want to bring Todd up to do the public works budget.
I just need a caffeine break.
Yeah, we're good.
See, can I still share from here, Mark?
Thank you, Steve. Well done.
You have the Cliff Notes abbreviated edition to this PowerPoint. If you'd like me to run over that or we can just go through the whole thing. So the mission statement uh really hasn't changed much over the years. It's just a straightforward to try to maintain adequate uh services. Through the effective and efficient use of personnel, equipment, material in accordance with federal, state, and local laws. Public Works organizational chart and, and further into the presentation, I'll kind of break that down, but that is our whole staff, including public works. Uh, we also have the building and planning in there as long as with also all of our departments, which includes the um streets. Uh, the water, wastewater, wastewater includes wastewater and wastewater treatment, wastewater collection. And also our solid waste. The funds, uh, manage a lot of funds. Most of those are in enterprise transportation. Uh, some of our other funds include the Public Works Administration building and planning. There's a couple that I'm not gonna go over because they're just kind of repetitive funds that you see. We bring cash in or interest rates and that, and that includes the street equipment. Um, reserve and also the bicycle fund is, as those funds build up, uh, we may uh envelop or purchase equipment from it. Or um go with some type of safety or pedestrian project. We use that for a match. And also the shop fund, that's kind of in and out, but if you do have questions on it, I'll be happy to answer it. Application of funds, just uh over thirty million. Obviously, the wastewater is gonna have a large share of that and that is because of the Cheney Purple Pipe. Uh, when we get into the capital, really will show there. Uh, other than that, all the other ones, move this, just kind of read them. Kind of laying, so yeah, with the wastewater and the capital added on there, that's a, a pretty good size of the application funds. Where it's coming from, again, grants, a majority of that is coming from grants, charges and service right around twenty-one percent. There you go, capital, sixty-three percent of that thirty. Uh, we do have a large capital projects in line. Um, that we will be trying to work towards in twenty twenty-four and then spilling probably over into twenty twenty-five. This does not include the pool bond. These are just separate. See that our public works revenues and expenditures uh really starting to incline in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Large amount is capital and again, the purple pipe, also some of the ARPA funds and the things we're doing with the uh water main. Uh, project as well. Pretty consistent within uh the transportation type stuff as we move along.
Todd, I had a quick question there. Can you uh just, why twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four is so much higher? Is that because of the purple pipe?
Purple pipe, yeah, that, that, that gray bar on the top, that is really the capital expenditures on there. So when we take a look at all the applications, we're pretty much uh consistent, but. Why that's increasing and even the revenues is due to grants and, and capital projects.
So that's the jump from twenty twenty-two to twenty-three and twenty-four. And then how um, how many years will that continue? Till we're done?
Till we're done, probably through uh twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-five into twenty twenty-six, probably with a purple pipe.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Here again, uh, these are the kind of breakdowns. Uh, obviously see twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. In between pretty much wastewater that we're, we're kind of focusing on, water is creeping up on that. Public Works uh admin, that's kind of what we do. We, we operate and we, we basically charge the enterprise funds for summer times. This is kind of the salaries and benefits. M and L, the capital that you see in twenty twenty-three uh was reserved for the public works to buy a vehicle. And we were looking at electronic vehicle, electric vehicle. Uh, but now we kind of have our hopes on SRTC and maybe backfilling that with some grant monies. As we move ahead, that's not pulling the trigger on, on that specific one this year. And also due to the availability of some of these. So we'll talk about breakdown, uh, pretty much this is the public works admin. Uh, you know, we do share Dan Curly between the, the light. Department and public works along with Anita and Sue is pretty much the permit technician out of the building department, but she also is our GIS guru. On that and then also Karen as administrator on that. Brett Lucas, as you all know him, he's our senior planner. Uh, we have Shane over on the building side. Under Terry Morning is the building inspector, but also Shane wears two hats as and also public works. Uh, manager and I have him pretty much focused on the transportation side of it. Also with the plats, the construction of the plats and uh any type of civil engineering plans that also come through there. And then we have a Dan Ferguson as a, as one of our managers and Dan takes care of pretty much all the environmental. He is uh, he's, he's really valuable in the wastewater and the water. He understands permitting. But he also handles all of my projects and his big one right now is the Cheney Purple Pipe. This is just some of the things we do. Uh, obviously we do come uh customer service. Uh, we do all of our purchasing, one-poll processing. Um, process work orders. Uh, we do have all of the GIS maintenance, anything that we have in the ground, we usually tie down. In a coordinates, which gives us a great database on there. Pay all of our vouchers. We do a lot of grant uh research and some writings. And then in addition, we, we also manage all of the departments, public departments. Uh, contracts and project managers. Uh, we do several, obviously the public works capital projects. You see most of the time I'm bringing either a contract to you to approve, but also we have a lot of repairs and maintenance that we do. Uh, with all sorts of contracts, so we, we deal with a lot of contracts and keep Cindy busy with DocuSign flying all over. Uh, public works planning and building, you know, they're, they're planner view, they're, they're the permitting. Uh, they do the inspections. Uh, the developments, the plats, uh, the building, it's also civil. This is, this is a graph that you see that uh building and planning revenues and expenditures really don't keep up with. Just due to whether we have good years and bad years, being kind of see that reflection as the revenues come down. We'll get into kind of the building activity this year and how we kind of project that over to twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Obviously, that's an estimate we readjust in those years. Permit activity inspections, gosh, mine's faster here. So permit activity and inspection activity, just because the permit does not mean it's a new resident, not doesn't mean these are new buildouts. So all of our permit activities could include uh remodeling, plumbing, HVAC, all of that. It's pretty consistent throughout the years is where we're in that mid-three hundred. Sometimes we'll, we'll tip over into the four hundreds as permit issued. And this would also include uh EWU building inspections is, is kind of commensurate with, with the permits issued. Just depending on the permits, some take longer to inspect, some are very short and then also the inspection comments. This is new residential construction and then also commercial construction activity, not new construction, uh, new commercial, but just construction activity. So if a, if a building vacates, a commercial building vacates, that they will, will have a, a permit issued, maybe up at Eastern will have some too. So we, we kind of keep track of the activities. We have a few maybe new businesses that come into town and they, they have a, a commercial activity there. But I want to point out the new residential construction because we do have been having this conversation about um plats. You know, we're, we're, we're hopefully, we're pushing for the uh, the final plats on a lot of this, two thousand nineteen. I think when you see that uh on the single family fifty-three, well, that was a build out of harvest block all in one year. That's probably one of our largest years for, for the single family. Uh, we don't have too many more buildable lots. We do have uh Golden Hills Fifth, as you noticed in that uh era in twenty twenty-one. Most of those were duplexes and that was where it hit that thirty-two. Now, when you uh, today, we have three single family resident. Okay, we just don't have any place to build. We don't, we have a lot of preliminary plats, but we don't have a lot of final plats. We see them under construction. Uh, but hopefully they'll get going here. Uh, multi-family, you can see where we had a, a big upshot and it takes, you know, more than a year, sometimes two years to build these multi-family. Just depends on the size of them, so we don't have a lot of that. And then also the commercial activity, yeah, that's kind of been pretty much consistent. And then also the commercial activity, yeah, that's kind of been pretty much consistent. This was the big opening when I showed the valuation and that was meant for last year. So when you see the valuations of out so far, it's probably our second lowest that we take a look at. And that's just commensurate with, there's just not a lot of building lots out there that we can grapple on and not a lot of stuff going on right now. Look at accomplishments. What we have to look forward to Golden Hills Sixth Edition and also Phase Two. They're starting to build or construct up on the phase two of that top area where the cul-de-sac is. They, we do have a final plat of Golden Hills Phase One. We should start seeing hopefully some building activity, if not later this year, maybe early in the spring. And those are single family house developments, park site addition. I know that they probably plan to be farther along, but they, I don't think they anticipated as many rocks and boulders in that project, but they are moving ahead. And it's going to be a pretty good sized development. We'll continue with the GPS infrastructure, fifty acre park study should be coming to a wrap up here. Hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have at least a study and a plan moving forward. We talked about land quantity analysis kind of in our workshop. Hopefully that will get wrapped up. All is a shout out to Susan. She does a great job with her Cheney Clean Sweep event. That's something that we, we look forward to in April. Obviously, our goal is to have the, all the preliminary plats get final. So we do have some, some building activity within, within Cheney. Comprehensive plan, we start, need to start working on gathering up. That's part of the land quantity analysis is going to help us out, move ahead. And obviously, we had to take a look at our parks plans or transportation plans along the way. And then of course, on the right, I'm just kind of giving you a breakdown of kind of those administrative supplies and services. Street Department, thank you for the little extra boost in that revenue source. Now we can do some pretty much deferred maintenance with the street department. Not so much has changed. Obviously, the revenues and expenditures sometimes been a little bit out of whack. But you can kind of see where it looks like we do have revenues there, but then again, we're talking about that, that full beginning cash balance, beginning cash balance, and I can do that breakdown here. So we're anticipating a hundred and forty thousand in the beginning cash, looking at six hundred and sixteen in the revenue side of it. We take out our operational expenses and we have a higher ending fund balance than a beginning fund balance, and that's, that's good news for me. We'll take out the emergency reserve, put it in place, and then we pretty much have operating cash ahead of what we came through. As they said, we don't know where the motor vehicle excise tax is going to go. We're anticipating we're not going to get as much until we maybe find, maybe we'll go up, maybe we won't. So got our fingers crossed. Transportation, obviously, this is just separate from our street department. This is all the transportation funds. I have the, obviously, the one-on-three fund that I I use to for that annual residential street. That's a, that's a dedicated fund. But then also we rely on arterial street grants. We've been fairly successful to get. So we're waiting on another one on TIB, but that's kind of that up and down era that we see as far as revenues and projects.
I have a quick question. On the slide before the street department ending fund balance, that, that section, that, that doesn't include like a street overlay and redoing the street or anything? That's just maintenance, correct?
That is just maintenance.
Okay, and then the next slide is for actual street replacement and things like that?
Those are the, those are the ones where you see kind of that, that how much we're spending. It's broken out in arterials and then also the residential. The residential is the, is the dedicated tax for preserving. And then the arterial street is mostly grant funds that we get. We use, if it's a preservation project, we do use the one-on-three, the residential street tax for matches. But we try to obtain TIB projects or SRTC projects, which usually pay, I think TIB is ninety percent and we only take a ten percent match. And then SRTC is about a thirteen and a half percent match.
Great.
And that's where you see Washington Street was probably the latest where we kind of overlaid that as a, that's an arterial street with grant monies.
Right. Good. Okay, thanks.
Street Department, what can I say? We got, I got Shane out here because he does handle a lot of, he's helping me out with, with the residential street and the arterial street and some of the the plats that are, that are coming along. But if I move to the right, Lucky, gosh, what would I do without Lucky? He is, he's a great guy. When I'm trying to take a look at, I think Larry is only three quarters in the street and he's also helping out parks. So I only got one, one guy, I got a street supervisor, should be supervising. And I got barely an FTE in the street and you'll just see pretty much Larry walking up and down the street collecting, collecting litter or maybe on a sweeper or maybe on a, on a snowplow. And then we kind of slide Matt over the parks. He's our full-time maintenance personnel. And then we do rely on a few seasonal park and street maintenance throughout the year. Just depends on the year, mostly for parks as we try to maintain the park system. So what does that include? You know, obviously forty-five plus miles of road maintenance, street sweeping. We try to get out there a few times a year. And obviously, if a storm comes or whether it's a windstorm or rainstorm, we, we try to get the sweeper out as well. And then when we find time, we try to get out at least a couple times per month to do sweeping on the main arterials as they collect a lot of dust for the summer. Storm water maintenance, snow and ice removal, that is the big ones. You can kind of see over there in the bike section. I gave a breakdown of actually what we, we spend or have budgeted for that year. Sign maintenance repairs, that one's something that we need to start getting after because there is certain criteria for reflectability and start changing out those signs. Annual street striping, we need to get back to getting our streets restriped and also with, with all the logos. We just have not had the budget to do that. That just kind of fell for to that end. Litter patrol, I always call it litter patrol. As you know, early in the mornings, you'll see our trucks running up and down the street and they're picking up anything that's out there. It's litter. They try to, try to get there before the traffic, especially on nine oh four. We set up traffic control for construction projects, community events, and also if there's an emergency event, we're there. Annual transportation project, the field management, Lucky is out there. He pretty much runs the whole show with our contractors. It's good to have him out there. It's, it's nice to have him being able to recognize and he does a great job at our projects. Some of the accomplishments, the TIB project, well, actually a preservation project, Mike McKean Way, we went in there and we did a different, a different process. I'm hoping that it will hold up. Originally, it was about a one point two million dollar fix. We went down there and did some geotech work. And we were able to remove the grind out the asphalt. And basically what we do is we wrote it till in a concrete mixture and turn it into a concrete base and then reoverlay it. We had that completed for right about a quarter million dollars. That was a, a big savings and hopefully that, that will hold up. The TIB preservation project, that was Clay Street, fourth to sixth and Sixth Street from, from Clay Street all the way to North, North Second. Annual sidewalk projects, I pretty much, we get to, we get requests in, we see sidewalks that are pretty much broken. We put those on a list. I usually give them to Lucky and give him, go out and do the quote. So we see some contracts, maybe two or three from different vendors because a lot of concrete companies are so busy, it's hard to really fit them in. So Lucky easily runs that program. Annual street sweeping, obviously, we have a sweep in a fall. It's really hard on the fall because you try to wait for that last leaf to drop. You're trying to wait for that. So you get out there, but sometimes it never happens. We get a windstorm and we're out there trying to chase leaves and then we get another windstorm or we're still going back to those same areas. So monthly sweeps downtown area arterials as we need it. And then obviously, when storm comes out, we're pretty much out there sweeping. The goals, obviously, the twenty twenty-four preservation project in the transportation plan, we have Second Street, North Ninth and Alki. Elm Street, Washington to North Six is a TIB grant application pending grant funds. We should hear this month whether we received any funds on that. Obviously, we're going to focus on our annual sidewalk repairs. The big one, the North Six Bets Traffic Circle. Hopefully, we'll get to design, we'll work through that process. We'll have a few informational meetings on that as we move forward on that. But the whole idea is to get that under construction this next year, which will have to have design completion pretty much in April, April or May. Again, they are.
I have a quick question about that one. The design completion, do we have plans already for where traffic's going to go when that?
You mean during the construction?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, during the construction, I think what you would do is put it in the summertime and then you would probably end up using one of the, or just not using one of the side streets as you're coming up nine oh four. And you would use another arterial just before, well, you take a look at the, the west side. So you would probably look at Mike McKean Way as coming down there. And, you know, surprisingly, traffic circles, they go relatively fast. They are, they are just a concrete type thing once they get going. So I would anticipate that they can keep at least a partial lane open when they're doing one half and then kind of shift everything over. But yeah, we do have streets that we can, we can detour through.
So we'll try to do that when the smallest amount of buses are going through because they, I mean, they all go through there.
During, during the school, yeah. You, you're talking STA or just?
No, school buses.
Well, that's why we're trying to target it for.
For the summer. Yeah, great.
And EWU out.
That'd be good, yeah.
Yeah, arterial street striping, you know, obviously, we're going to, I'm going to try to get ahead of that, get everything all painted up. And then annual sign repairs, we do have backlog trying to get those as we take a look at the life expectancy on reflective criteria. Jumping on to water division, kind of see that, obviously, in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, there's a lot of capital projects that we're dealing with, some that you know, obviously, a water main replacement, some we didn't really ask for is reservoir condition and taking a little reservoir and replacing that bit. A few skaters to that end. So there is some, there's some money to be spent in the water over the next couple of years on that. Again, the revenue source is that beginning fund balance and that ending fund balance. Yeah, with the beginning cash balance, total revenues, obviously, the total revenues include the capital or depreciation, which is a capital cost of just over one point six million. When you take in our operation and maintenance, we do have an ending fund balance of a little higher than our beginning fund balance, which is good news. Take out emergency reserve and that's what we have for operating cash as we get our revenue sources in. Water Department, again, Dan, Dan helps us out in, in the water as far as the project manager goes. We have a water supervisor. We have typically, we have four water operators, but we do have a vacant water operator that we're looking to hire on. Kind of see the budget, see what we do, water conservation, distribution, distribution is pretty much all pipes, anything that we look in the ground and that would be including fire hydrants, everything that we everything that tramps, you know, pretty much sends water down the pipe, water production, that's all of our wells. We have eight wells, reservoirs. That's where that money and repairs come from in there. And then obviously, our water testing, we do daily, weekly, quarterly, monthly, whatever Department of Health requires of us for our well testing on that. And then obviously, the big one over the next year is the, the big capital projects we have planned. Yeah, municipal wells, we now down to seven municipal wells. Obviously, you know about well five, the PFAS that has not been operated. Five reservoirs down, on the four reservoirs, we were, we're working on putting a lid on, on the other one, three booster stations, twenty-four hundred service meters, forty-five miles. Four hundred and thirteen fire hydrants, if we have that on our GIS. Obviously, we do the water testing, hydrant flushing, also the one call projects, and we do have one of our operators when we do water main projects that they're out there all the time in case we hit a live line or they shouldn't, any of our contractors should not be operating our valves. Strongly disagree with that because we don't want to shut them off prisoners as they're doing their projects. Just kind of keep an eye on that. Some of the accomplishments, obviously, the water main project was Clay Street, fourth to sixth. And then we had Elm Street from North Six to North Fifth, and then on North Fifth Street, the water main from Elm to Oak. That was a pretty, that was a part ARPA funds, but also CDBG funds that we have. But we do have another funding cycle, CDBG grants coming up here, which will be focusing on pretty much North Fifth Street from Oak to Oakland and then North Fourth Street from Oakland all the way back to Elm. Reservoir One project, the roof demolition is kind of scheduled in. That will probably be happening in the next couple of weeks. I'll bring you tonight the new roof design where they'll actually deliver the roof, we'll assemble it. And we found a contractor that's willing to do it that has a big enough brain. This thing's pretty close to ninety foot radius. And it's going to have to be built on North Tenth Street and pretty much picked up and set on Reservoir One. So you might want to be there for that day just to see the excitement. Water skate and the fiber project, that's continuing project. We started the construction, we're running fiber for our water support and it's also going to lend into the wastewater and the list stations. And I believe eventually we'll have out the light department in their, in their substations that we kind of reach to the outskirts of Cheney. Obviously, the well five PFAS, the assessment, the monitoring that we are continuing to do. And we did get word that we received a funding program of four million, which we have eighteen, well, sixty days to sign the contract. Eighteen months for an OSTR receipt and four years after that. So there'll be some discussion on, on what we want to do with PFAS on, on well five. Security fences for well three and five is complete. Obviously, the CB watering funding, main project will be for twenty twenty-four is what we're working on right now. Again, that's the twenty twenty-four water main project. We'll cover North Fifth and North Fourth, the telemetry upgrade, the SCADA well five, which we talked about, fire hydrant maintenance. We have four hundred and thirteen fire hydrants. We have thirty-two two-port fire hydrants, forty-seven three-port fire hydrants, which I feel is undersized, but we have had discussion with the chief. We looked up, he looked up to try to figure out, I asked how, how old does fire hydrants really need to be? We didn't really have any. There is no really criteria. As long as they, the fire hydrants are functioning, the ports are open and supply the gallon per minute. But in my assessment, there was a recommendation that we should consider maybe replacing them after fifty years old. So some of those criterias are there. The two-port fire hydrants are the two-inch, that doesn't give them a very large ports. We figured that the thirty-two port fire hydrant probably be first priority. The forty-seven three-port fire hydrants are the, they don't have the five, it's a five inch, right? Five inch? Big port in the front, they have a two-inch port in the front. So they have three two-inch ports. That's what I consider undersized. And then we have a hundred and thirty-five, fifty-plus year old fire hydrants. So kind of give you assessment on, on what the fire hydrants are. Hydrant flushing program, yeah, I'm hopefully that we can get fairly active, but you understand we are one reservoir down during that and we're actually one well down too. So when we had good news that well three was producing, we lost a nearly five hundred gallon per minute well in well five. So that reduces our, our flushing programs pretty much before the full onslaught of irrigation. So that depends on when we can get out there in March or April and then depends on the year when they start ranking up the irrigation. Booster station one is part of our project. I'd like for the design contract this next year, probably the, the construction to happen in twenty twenty-five. Talking about wellhouse updates, we have some old wellhouses. We also have some fairly new wellhouses, just need to be updated a little bit. Well to rehabilitation, hopefully, we'll bring in that to you here either this month or next month to get that well pretty much rehabilitated before the, before the irrigation season. And then the water meter, meter reading, as Steve indicated, we still have walking routes. We still have meters that we have to go and lift each lid and physically read them. We need to complete that automated process and also probably have an active program in changing out those metal lids to some type of composite is where we can read one. Solid waste, picking up the. Solid waste, picking up the trash, not too exciting uh with that, but these guys, these guys really do a great job at uh at at picking up. Uh tons of trash every year and uh. Pretty much flat. This year, we have the purchase of the commercial truck, the year prior to that was a was a residential truck. Uh nothing planned for twenty twenty-four, with the exception, I just heard word that our commercial truck that we ordered this year won't be available till probably. February, March of of next year. It's just delayed in the production side of it.
So does that mean it'll have to come out of your budget in twenty twenty-four instead of twenty twenty-three?
I don't, I I just sit down with Cindy and. She can help me out here on the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So uh here we go, beginning cash, uh you know, with the revenues, the O N M's. Capital depreciation, even though we're not buying it, I just added depreciate. That's something that we should be, we should be looking at to to plan for, especially with the replacement of the trucks. Or any capital project and then obviously your ending fund balance. My concern, uh when you take a look at the revenues and you take a look at the O N M, uh that's pretty tight. Uh so if you if you wanted to try to plan out a uh, you know, to to buy these trucks upwards of three hundred, four hundred thousand. Uh and they don't last the longest, that we we can start taking a look at that. Again, uh solid waste department, uh we have the four operators. Um basically, we have the commercial operator, the residential operator, roll-off operator, then uh the operator that's kind of a. Uh spells off can can kind of do just about anything with either someone being gone, vacations. But also runs a recycling center and takes all the recyclables to the smart center. So that's uh pretty much made up of our staff. And the L I D C administration and then also the solid waste collection, which is uh six hundred and fifty, but I think we budgeted right around. Five hundred and seventy uh disposal cost. Um obviously, the the handle recycling drop-off facility, which includes the clean green cart service. And also the clean green drop-off site. We have cart services, dumpster services and multifamily and we do roll off and then we have a few compactor. Uh container services, our biggest one is E W U, although we do have a uh Safeway and have the department complex that's our uh compacting as well.
Todd, I do have a quick question. You mentioned that we we don't have any revenue for recycling, so. That would be what it costs us per year, the seventy-two seven.
Yeah, I mean, uh that was in in the recycling uh uh side of it, is the seventy, kind of the seventy-two seven planning for how much it's gonna cost us to that end. But also uh a lot of the um the maintenance around there and then you would have to put a almost a part-time position out of the administration. So there it is, I would say it's it's probably uh probably north of a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty.
Yeah, of what it costs us to provide that for the city. Great. That's a great service, so just wondering how much it costs.
Well, the accomplishments, uh procurement of the new commercial solid waste truck, when it arrives, uh obviously, our annual Cheney clean sweep event. Uh the interlocal agreement with Spokane County, that I think that was big uh for for two reasons. Uh now we do have an interlocal, uh we do have an out to uh if anybody can't make our recycling facility or or needs information about any recycling program. It's on the county website, they're they're welcome to go to those those services as well. Plus, um we do have a tipping fee tax uh that kind of gets rebated back in through all of the. You know, the cities that are participating in that. So that gives us a little bit of a rebate for some of our programs. And Spokane County has been excellent at providing or giving us help for those services. And I believe Vince is now on the solid waste advisory committee.
When was the first meeting?
It's coming up, isn't it? Uh roll up door at the recycling facility, uh that was accomplished and then uh the solid waste rate study. Uh uh which will hopefully be bringing back here in in just a little while. The goals, uh you know, obviously, we'll continue the recycling assessment. Uh collection alternatives, if there's any recycling disposable alternatives, if there uh really is any. Um right now, it's not looking good, so we continue to go to the smart center. Whether other recycling facilities would open up where we can market different products uh to that end. Uh clean green site assessment, uh site capacity, processing alternatives, we're always talking about that. And then, of course, our twenty twenty-four Cheney clean sweep, which we already plugged in. Uh the event is scheduled for April thirteenth and the reason why is we work with our credit union. And uh the shred truck is really popular, uh so that was the only date in April that we could get it. So uh we worked with the with the credit. App to uh reserve that date, so that's that's kind of worth for looking at. Wastewater, uh yeah, you can see the big ticket item on twenty twenty-four and that's mostly contributed to. Little over sixteen million in cattle projects for Cheney Purple Pipe. Uh so we went all the way from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Uh with the heavy contracts that will be coming that are currently in place and probably will be coming in twenty twenty-four. This one, um you know, obviously, we have the the beginning cash balance, we have our revenues, which includes that sixteen point. Almost sixteen point four million in our, in our purple pipe project, but when you take out our O N M. You you take out our our ending fund balance, emergency reserve. We don't have a lot, we we do actually do have a little bit of a deficit there, so there's gonna have to be uh you know, probably future discussion on. How do we go from there?
And Todd, just a quick reminder, that's all grant money, right, for the purple pipe?
Purple pipe is uh, no, it's it's a combination of mostly grants. Um so uh we received. Uh a few years back, um we received a two million dollar grant, which procured the U V system and the filtration system. For the Cheney Purple Pipe and then we received another eleven million. Uh dollar grant from the Department of Commerce, obviously, it was a legislative appropriation amount for eleven million. Uh and then uh just this last year, maybe it was this year, we received uh federal funds from the Bureau of Reclamation. Of uh just over five point four million. So when you kind of add those all together, we have a little over eighteen million. The project uh is estimated right about twenty-three million, but it's been a while and we're probably anticipating that to go north. Uh but we have secured a loan with the Department of Ecology, a one point two percent loan uh to kind of uh. Make up that balance as of now. Um that's not to say if this project goes for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, that we. Could have a chance at 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 getting other appropriations or uh other asks, either on the state or the federal side of it. So that that. It's probably our hope is to to keep working at it.
Right.
Bring that, to bring that loan debt down.
Good, thanks, Todd.
This one, it's it's kind of a wastewater treatment on one side, we got Mike Ho and 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 his gang, they operate the wastewater treatment plant, we have operators out there. Uh that uh turn our wastewater into better water at the end of the plant, a lot of stuff that goes on there. And then we have our wastewater collection site and that's the the crew that operates all of the the collections, the mains, the manholes. And gets down to the wastewater. Broke it up wastewater collection in two parts, even though you see a full budget for wastewater, we'll break it up in collection budgets. Now, obviously, forty-eight miles of sewer mains, uh they do process our clean green, uh because they use it in our bio solids composting. Uh that and there, they do one calls and they help us out with about forty plus miles of storm uh mains when we need it. Wastewater treatment, obviously, we have the the advanced wastewater treatment facility, hundred acres of wetlands. I think if I calculate that right, we're about six hundred now of the area around that is a buffering land. And the bio solids processing uh is what they do as part of that. So when we are sending bio solids over to their. Compost building, we're processing that and also the one. And that big ticket item, obviously, is the capital for the purple pipe. The wastewater accomplishments, obviously, we focus on the third of the collection mains uh being clean. Uh the Cheney Purple Pipe Project, uh all of the motor control centers installation has been completed, which we call task two. Final treatment building, as you recall, we awarded that, the design and bid was out and the construction has started, uh they have started digging. Uh so if you have a chance, if you want to go out, just give me a call, it's pretty exciting out there. Um the railroad boring project, uh we we have that uh design, we'll bid and hopefully get that out to uh. The contract here and then also the solar array project uh that was completed, that is now uh kind of up and running. Uh obviously, the goals, um water reuse funding option, like we talked about, we'll we'll keep working at that, Cheney Purple Pipe Project. Uh final treatment construction, the boring project construction, we'll look towards next year, uh reuse pump station and storage. Uh uh we'll we'll take a look in twenty twenty-four to uh get the uh bid going on that and then also the reuse. Distribution construction portion of that. So those those tasks will be kind of added on there, but it's pretty important to get the. The uh boring underneath the railroad before we hit the distribution, because that gives them just the green light to continue on, so. Uh the only really wastewater that we felt we needed was the wastewater discretionary, the piston grid replacement, that was the original one. Way back in ninety-three, ninety-four. It's the same color, it looks the same, it's the original one, it's starting to wear down a little bit, so uh that's that's the only asset we have for discretionary. Items, so. We'll move on, we always like to do the monthly rate comparison, uh when you take a look at our our water rate, how do we fare in there? Obviously, the the base rate, uh we are the lowest uh base rate in there, uh but when we put our thousand cubic foot of usage. Uh we're kind of leveling out uh uh with with everybody. Obviously, the outside of Spokane maybe is a little bit higher. Solid race, yeah, can't beat our our sixty-four gallon cart, uh we are uh. Obviously, really light on on that compared to uh other jurisdictions. Wastewater rate comparisons, yeah, obviously, you see, um you know, Liberty Lake a few, a little while ago was was kind of in the competitiveness. But they just finished their uh advanced treatment system and I think it was reused, so their their rates are up. Um you know, obviously, every heights with their uh treatment system that they built a few years back, their rates are up, but we're right around uh thirty. Thirty-seven compared to Spokane and thirty compared to Mendocino.
Todd, before we leave that one, the two on the right, Spokane City and Spokane Outside City. I don't, I think what's interesting is that the city of Spokane, when they built their facility, it was almost totally grant funded. Here comes the county where theirs, they built at the old racetrack, not no more grant funds. And that's why you see the difference and Cheney was very fortunate. We got some of the last of the construction grant funds, we saw a treatment, but wasn't as much as the city of Spokane, they. Back in the days, that was almost, I don't know, ninety-five percent federally funded. We got ours at sixty. Most part, well, we're sixty and then Spokane Outside City. You don't get the grants anymore and that's why you see these three. Three, the every heights, every lake, those are all when they built their plant. There's no more grant funds. So it does, it's a direct hit on. Users, so we're very fortunate to be where we're at.
Timing is everything. I mean, uh you 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 take a look at uh the original cost of our treatment plant. And then as we move into into even the expansion, um we have an advanced wastewater treatment plant sitting on six acres. Um our total project uh on on the original one, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, is right around almost twelve million and that included. Uh nearly five hundred acres of buffer land and wetland, including the the treatment plant. Come back to the expansion in two thousand and ten, that was another eleven million. So you put that twenty-three million of where we've come from today. And compare it to a new treatment plant, that size is gonna run several higher, even double or triple that cost. So yeah, timing was everything on on that, because it is very expensive to build a treatment plant.
Well, and just as. Talk about the legislature and I opened my big mouth as far as do no more harm, but when they took away the. Power trust fund, we funded a bunch of our. We surgery implant with that, with those funds and they were great funds, because they would qualify for anything and everything. And then you can see now how the impact is to cities when that funding source went away. Look at every heights, every lake, and they could have benefited from that. So it's a forty, forty dollar difference out of the pocket of those ratepayers and that's just for debt service. So what they do over there does have an impact. And uh it was a great program, we benefited greatly, like Todd said, it was the timing. Couldn't have been better, but now that program's pretty much drained, I think, legislatures just took the money.
This is probably my favorite slide, because we're down there. As we take a look at both uh the total burden on that, uh we kind of run that right across the way, obviously, you know, our solid waste rates are are helping that. Three hour hit on that.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd, any more questions for Todd?
I just have one, just because I'm blanking on what it is. Uh monthly water rate comparison, our base rate is eleven dollars and thirteen cents and then usage takes us to sixteen sixty. Can you remind me what usage is?
So a thousand cubic foot of water, uh our rates, um when we take that 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 formula in there, that's the usage. If I was to have a thousand cubic foot of water in using in my house and a thousand cubic water is almost seventy-five hundred gallons of water. And that's what that usage is. So that that is a, that's a variable, some people use more, some people use less.
Okay.
Dan uses really good ones when it's summer.
Shorten your shower, Dan, come on.
I told you guys, Steve, you're doing a great job. I mean.
Yeah.
It's the epitome of efficiency, you look at street that has the same number of people from fifteen years ago plus. Now they're in charge of parks meet, I don't know how the hell you do it. We got great public safety and police and fire. But I just see some. Troubling things coming with regard to transportation where. Uh we've been relying on grant funds for arterial street preservation and that. I see that trend changing, uh in S R T C, uh the three middle site cities. Got little of any preservation grant funding this time. And I see that continuing. They're the big guys, they got all the average daily traffic numbers, blah, blah, blah. And and we've been relying on federal program through S R T C and T I B through the state, but. I don't think that's gonna be guaranteed any longer.
Sounds to me like S R T C needs to change their evaluation criteria.
They get outnumbered, but uh any, in any event, then plus, again, we said before, our funding for the. Residential program is sunsetting. So uh we probably should be looking at some discussions in upcoming meetings on, you know. What we want to do and we can't overlay the second half of. Elm Street. And you know, and I can, I can walk around, make sure your bus are all just by looking at. Uh looking at the asphalt. So, I mean, S C is critical for Cheney. But it, I I just see trouble ahead on funding, uh you know, we've. Helped with their residential, all that's starting to really, the effectiveness of that is decreasing. It's probably half of what it was when it started. Asphalt prices have done to roof. So with what we get by and do the street, I'm just blown away. I mean, we we have the best stone removal.
Yeah.
I mean, partly because of our size, but we know what we're doing. And all that stuff, it's just, we can't take it for granted, we we need to start talking about some long range. Policies on how we want to have uh funding and, you know, I. I see the. policies on how we want to have funding and, you know, I see the whether we look at changes in our general fund, how we look at building or that three permits for housing right now, but I don't know what the economy is gonna do, but we got a as efficient as we are, and it's not any fault of anyone, but as efficient as our street, we have some inefficiencies that have crept in on certain areas in the general fund that we might have to take a look at the slide, some of those resources elsewhere. But yeah, strategies for funding transportation is a major upcoming issue for cities ourselves.
Yeah, I was thinking of another future one like Paul was too, with the fire hydrants, if there would be a possibility for a grant there that we could grab a hold of. And, you know, maybe look into that. I don't know, maybe Chief's got some contacts there too about what grants would look like. No, okay, all right. But just like, you know, if we could find some grant money for fire hydrants, that'd be great as well.
Okay, we're in open public hearing. So anybody in the crowd wish to ask questions or make comments on our Public Works twenty twenty four budget? Or online? Anybody on Zoom have comments or questions? Anybody out in the crowd? Thank you, Todd. I'm gonna go ahead and close this public hearing and I appreciate.
I wanted to say, oh, your honor, speaking of wastewater, could we take a break?
Well done, Todd. So yes, I was gonna, I was gonna propose that too. Can we take a ten minute break here just to? So if we could, oh, I guess. Make it five till, so twelve minutes, I guess, give us time to stretch.
That's what they do for football.
I just have my home.
We'll be these mother guys.
Their bureaucracy.
All right, folks, let's get back into it here. We finished up our, our public hearings and now we're gonna move into our resolutions. And the first one, if everybody's ready, is Resolution F one ninety-three. This is the AMI meter purchases, Steve. For twenty twenty-four. Thank you. That was a much needed break.
Okay, so part of the presentation, if you recall, that we ordered six thousand AMI meters a few years ago. And we're, so this is your order for twenty twenty-four in the budgets, three hundred and ten thousand. Actual cost right now is around two ninety-one. This past year, they gave about a five, six percent materials cost increase, therefore the higher budget is ten percent on that is thirty thousand dollar jump. So you kind of padded a little bit. We've received three thousand meters so far, so it'll be fourteen forty for twenty twenty-four and I'll be back next year asking for twenty twenty-five. These are the smart meters and it's a sole source contractor, if you recall, because Tonless is a a sole source contractor with Itron to put their chip in their. So having said that, I'm requesting approval to purchase one thousand four and forty-four meters for twenty twenty-four for a budget amount of three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. A motion to second to approve Resolution F one ninety-three, our twenty twenty-four AMI meter purchases. Any questions?
This did go through Public Works. Providing now, I think they're cheaper now for wait even longer.
The great thing was six fixed price two years ago and they're honoring that price. That's why we ordered six thousand.
And they're honoring it for next year as well, right?
Correct.
I believe because they're saving lives for people in our community, we should do this.
So I do have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Thanks, Steve. Resolution F one nine three passes. I think you're still up. Resolution F one ninety-four, this is the Avista inland power engineering services agreement.
Yes, I talked about that in the presentation. So this is a five thousand dollar cost that inland is also donating five thousand, not donating, but paying five thousand. Avista requested ten thousand dollars for the design of the bypass at the Cheney substation. Inland will do, or Avista will do the in-house design with their engineers. And then later on, I said there'll be a second contract this year for the build out and they will do the build because it's their property. So they're full source too. It's their property, their design, their build. So I'm requesting that he approve, I, I put six thousand there, just a twenty percent increase per chance. The engineering goes askew for the the agreement within the power and light to do the engineering for the bypass.
Remove for passage of Resolution F dash one nine four. Second.
Thank you. Have a motion to second to pass Resolution F one nine four, the engineering services agreement with Avista inland power. Any final questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Thanks, Steve. One nine four passes. Okay, Resolution F one ninety-five, this is the utility charges and fees, Cindy.
It is. Thank you, your honor. Earlier this year in January, you reviewed the rate studies for water and electric from FCS and you decided on the five-year rate study where we would have a, an incremental increase every year for the next five years. What this charges and fees resolution in front of you does is adds that electric increase and that water increase. And brings those forward, starting with our first bill that is rendered the end of January. So that starts about the fifteenth of December. Meter reads fifteenth of December to the fifteenth of January about that. And then those bills are issued the end of January. Those rates are already included in the light and water budgets that you saw earlier this evening. At this point, there is no increase for solid waste or for sewer. I know that that rate study is ongoing right now. And when that recommendation comes forward, we will bring this back and decide how you want to handle that at that time. So this particular resolution, F one ninety-five includes electric and water, solid waste and sewer. However, solid waste and sewer are the same as last year. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Cindy. Any questions for Cindy on these increases?
So move.
Second. A motion in a second to approve Resolution F one ninety-five, the utility and chart, utility charges and fees. Any question, final questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. One nine five passes. Resolution F one ninety-six, this is the Bobcat hydraulic breaker attachment purchase. This is Steve again.
Yes, I'm requesting approval to purchase a Bobcat hydraulic breaker nail point, point attachment. This goes to the mini excavator, which is a long arm. I had put a picture in there for you to take a look at what that device is. This is a great needle for breaking up concrete, digging through bedrock to plant our poles. If we call someone out to do this, now you have to rent the whole Bobcat and the attachment or the mini ax and the attachment. And it's just not worth the rental fee. It's time to have one. I recommend that this was not budgeted this year. I'll be using fifteen thousand dollars from the city generator, the eighty thousand dollars that was in the capital. Because I still haven't found a generator to purchase. And if you recall that, well, I'll leave that story alone. So I think this would be a great addition. Not only will light department use it, but it'll be available for streets and water to go and, and use this device also. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Steve. Are you donating it to the rental equipment fund? Is that what you say? Oh, how would they use it then? They would just, the kindness of the light department or reach that charge? Okay, just to clear.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second to approve Resolution F one ninety-six, the attachment purchase, Bobcat hydraulic breaker attachment purchase. All in favor, say aye. And although it wasn't budgeted, there is a lot of money that we haven't used. Thanks, Steve. All right, Todd, you're up. Resolution F one ninety-five, Purple Pipe Railroad Boring Project Contractor Board.
Yeah, we had standing room only this time. Ten contractors showed up for the demolition project, project and we were kind of all over the board on that. Elder demo submitted the, the lowest one, just at eighty-four thousand five sixty. Which one is that one?
That's the boring project. A little bit more than. Just a little bit.
There are no questions.
All right, there were four contractors on this one that, that submitted the bid. Corridor contracting submitted the lowest bid. They are fairly, they are a local contractor here, just right at two point one million. And all of them were kind of coming in, the engineer's estimate was right around two million. So what that will include is that is a boring under the Union Pacific Railroad and also the Burlington Northern Railroad. And it's a thirty inch casing under both railroads to supply the purple pipe. In addition to the purple pipe, there's an extra conduit there for fiber and communication. So as you recall, I think it was this, earlier this year, last year, we did do all the permitting for both, both of those railroads. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any.
Kind of note, if I can just, just for the sake of our guests, how are we paying for that?
Well, we are paying for it right now, through the appropriation for the Department of Commerce, which is a legislative appropriation.
Can you drive a fire truck through that opening?
We could, try.
We should be able to for two million dollars.
It's, yeah, I mean, it, it is a, it is a very, these are, these are long pieces of conduit that has to be bored underneath the railroad. We can't open the railroad. And we're anticipating at the U P that it's gonna be a seasonal, a seasonal one because of the high water. The reason why we, we do have a, a, a long timeframe on this because we feel that we need the, the perfect conditions to get under the U P. Don't know how the BNSF is gonna go as far as rock, but it's gonna be quite a challenge.
Just to comment and consumer posture may hit on that earlier on. Are these grant funds or loan funds? But as we know, that they're all the above and this boring thing, it's, it's an obscene cost as far as I'm concerned, but railroads rule. But anyhow, my comment is that we'll want to pay close attention here as we get further into. Now, this would be considered part of the distribution of the purple pipe. Because we got about an eight million dollar gap still. And I, I prefer not to borrow eight million dollars if we can figure out some other way to get that. Because we're at a point where this would probably become part of the wastewater sewer bill. And we need to figure out between now and as we get into this further, how we want to structure that. The monthly cost for this purple pipe. And I, I think we're in a good place to do that. But as I understand, we need to move fairly quickly if we want to look at a congressional earmark for the upcoming congressional budget process. And there, there's interest in this because it's a great project. The majority of it's already funded and people like to fund projects at the end when they know what they're getting for that. I think that's what we have to strive for. I just don't want to go into this thing blind and add a considerable amount of debt service cost to our wastewater pairs without fully understanding that. And with this, as I understand, it's already baked in out of that. Which, what was the source here, Todd?
We, we would be using Department of Commerce, the eleven, the eleven million and then also the twenty-five percent match of the, the Department of yeah, USP, your reclamation.
So we're still, it's all baked into what we already knew we were gonna do, but it's this last eight million net. I want to make sure we don't get too far over the front of our skis. Otherwise, we're gonna be hitting hardship level on what the single family residential rate is for sewer, just because of a project, not that it isn't a good worthy project. Just something to consider. Thank you.
You don't ever want it to be seventy-five percent complete and then we have to stop because we don't have money. Or putting it on the backs of the city. Go ahead.
Just a quick comment, as a member of the consultant.
Comments, questions for Todd?
So move.
Second.
A motion to second to approve Resolution F one ninety-seven, Purple Pipe Railroad Boring Project Contract Award. All in favor, say aye. Mr. Bartels is abstaining. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F. Oh, did I say all in favor? Motion is like one ninety-seven is a pass. Thank you. That'll track there. Okay, Resolution F one ninety-eight, this is the Hagen Park Pool Demolition Contract Award.
There we go. I will now say that we had ten contractors show up. Yeah, Elder Demo was eighty-four thousand five sixty, all the way up to well over about three hundred and forty thousand. So majority of them were right above a hundred thousand. So very pleased with the outcome. We spent a lot of time with Elder. I mean, he, he was the one that came in and he, he took a hard look at it for a long time with the operation. So I think he's, he's fairly comfortable with his estimate. Hopefully, we can move forward with this quickly so we can get some designs and, and get going. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd.
Can we get this many vendors to bid on all our projects?
Yeah, for some reason, yeah. If we want to demo more stuff, I guess.
Like F two oh one. I do have one question. Can you remind me, Todd, what did we talk about the estimate would be if the city employees did that demo work?
If we, I, I don't really have a, 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 a hard cost estimate because when we took a look at what our bidding or sealed bids and bidding results were, I mean, we went well over a hundred and sixteen by that, by that spread.
For some reason, I had one twenty-five in my head, so I think that's good.
I think it was one twenty-five, six hundred is the, is the R C W, you know, for that. But Todd, even if you use a force account, you'd still have to pay prevailing wage. And on thirty-five working days, I mean, I think the three people could be helpers of fifty thousand alone. Yeah, I think the logistics fall in the hauling cost. You, you got a lot of, a lot of stuff that you have to, to get somewhere.
Will this affect any employee morale since they won't get to use large equipment now to demo things or what do you think?
We're nearing snow line season.
All right, so we'll make it up there. Okay, great, yeah. If there's no.
Thank you. A motion in a second for passes Resolution F one ninety-eight, the pool demolition contract award. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F one ninety-eight passes. And Dave, I think is up next. Dave Lucas. Dave, this is Resolution F two hundred, the resolution to accept public defense grant funds. Always like to accept grant.
Take money. Yes. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, city council. I am Dave Lucas. I'm the new court administrator. I've met many of you, but not all of you. So Resolution F two hundred is to accept grant funds from the Office of Public Defense to support our public defenders here in Cheney. It's a two-year grant that would provide fifteen thousand dollars each year to help augment that program for our defense of our citizens here in Cheney.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave on accepting some money from Office of Public Defense?
So move. Second.
Thank you. Motion in a second to pass Resolution F two hundred. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Dave. Todd, Resolution F two zero one, Reservoir One Roof Procurement and Installation. And installation contract.
Found it on the web. Hey, uh, the reservoir one roof, uh, we we actually went out to bid because we were dealing with uh with the companies. Um, to replace the the roof. And when they found out that the logistics of getting the roof up there, we decided to go out for a sealed bid. T M L Construction is a local company here. Uh, currently, they are putting uh covers on our our clarifiers out the wastewater treatment plant. So uh, they apparently, they were the sole bid. It is a specialty project that they they kind of dive into. Uh, and also they probably have the largest crane. Uh, what will happen is they will actually be assembling. Uh, nearly a ninety foot diameter lid. Uh, the lid only weighs right around sixteen thousand pounds. But the reach uh has to go from North Tent all the way to Reservoir One if you have that site. So. Um, we'll do, be doing some prep work on North Tent to have a construction pad on North Tent at the top of the hill. And uh, be able to come in and modify and set a crane in there to push the uh. Put the new lid on Reservoir One. So.
When, is there a timeline for that?
Uh, the the, yeah, we're trying to get it into April and May.
April.
Uh, in addition, when we looked at the design and we looked at the weight of the, well, it's only sixteen thousand pounds, but the. The collar on the reservoir has to be modified. So we do have to do some concrete work all around there to widen the base on that. So that's, that's in addition to just directly going out and ordering reservoir lid. So with that, I'll be happy to answer the questions.
Thanks Todd. Questions for Todd?
Todd, could you update? So the removal of the current lid was what, two fifty?
Two fifty.
So and then the source was ARPA still?
Source was ARPA. I think I had.
Cause we only had three hundred, I thought, set aside in ARPA just.
No, I think we got, yeah, I think we bumped that up. I think the eight hundred thousand, six hundred, eight hundred thousand, yeah.
So we're right on, right, right in that area then. So we do have it funded with ARPA. And that's a million gallon tank that soon to collapse. And then we'll put aluminum lid on it and we're all happy.
Yes.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, uh, Todd, I just have a little question about only getting one bid on the project. And and that's mostly because it's so specialized that nobody else wanted to bid on it. Is that what happened here?
Feeling that that nobody really wanted it. And and also the companies, um, this particular company has the size of a crane to do it.
Okay. I think my only question for us. And it necessarily not for you, but do we have a financial practice that we require more than one bid? Or do we just? Go with the one bid, even if we don't know somebody else can do it for for less?
I'm not aware of any criteria that we have to have more. I mean, we have to post it and we got it out onto the. Um, our plan review room. And I and I'm not too sure. I think there was a few contractors looking at it. But uh, we only received one bid.
And in the end, when we put it out to bid and don't receive more, do we make phone calls to other people to bid it out or we just take it as it is?
Typically not. You know, we don't try to promote it. That's why we go with the fairness of of submitting the ad and uh. Uh, basically our plan review. And when we go in, if you wanna bid on a project, you gotta sign up on the plan holders list. If you're not on that plan holders list and you submit a bid, you're disqualified. So that gives us a chance to know who might be interested in it. A lot of times we're seeing some contractors uh before primes. But like I say, this one is such a specialty. Uh, product. That's why we we pretty much had to go out with a demo uh to that end because that's pretty much a specialty one that we had to go out with a. Uh, with the lid on it. If we were to construct a lid there, we might have got more because that's more in line. But I think the earlier estimates that we were looking at was right about. One point two million for a lid replacement on that. So we kind of went back to the drawing board to see if we could get a. Number one, the question was, is Reservoir One structurally sound to make the investments to put a new lid on? Or should we go a different direction and and build a new reservoir? I think we answered that question. We did do. Got in there and and did some testing, some boring, uh, some x-rays on the rebar. We felt that that was in still pretty good condition with the exception of the lid.
Mm-hmm.
And so then we we just found, uh, we just happened to find. A company that provides aluminum lids, uh, because we went through a clarifier. We're we're actually putting lids on clarifiers at our wastewater treatment plant. Their sixty foot, this reservoir is ninety. Different company, but the same price or same concept, light aluminum type lids.
Right.
Our water might be a little hotter in the summertime, but but.
Yeah.
Compared to concrete, but yeah, that 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 was our our best stab at the cost.
Okay. Oh, I just always struggle a little bit when we only have one bid. It's kind of like, ah, how do we really know it costs that much and we're not just getting taken? But I do understand it's a very specialized process and. We got ten bids on the other one, so maybe. Maybe it's just an anomaly.
Well, second motion.
Okay, motion and a second to approve resolution F two zero one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks Todd, resolution F two zero one passes. Moving on to well one emergency repairs, resolution F two zero two.
Yeah, on August twenty eighth, uh, well, one kind of went down. It did go down. Um, so I actually um, wanted to get the. Um, specialty pump who did the rehab uh back in January to take a look at it. So he ended up pulling the pump. Uh, kind of went to to battle for us to uh get the pump under a product warranty. Um, worked with them and we did get a a a brand new pump. Now, uh, after all the dust has settled, uh, well, one is back up and running as of. Few weeks ago. And the only thing that specialty pump is is asking for is crane rental and a little bit of discount service. So. I think it's uh, the the reason why it was so long is we just had to work through the process to try to get a pump uh under warranty. And now I'm coming back. Providing you with this kind of this emergency resolution, just over ninety eight hundred dollars plus tax.
So it was a faulty uh pump. One of the bowls was bad or the shaft or the bearings?
Yeah, that's that's our take. They they were saying that we had a crooked well. We said, no, we didn't have a crooked well. Um, so that they ended up.
I didn't see that.
So especially did a good job. Derek Derek did a good job.
Ninety eight hundred bucks.
Somebody built that, somebody built that device the day after the Super Bowl.
There are no further questions.
Yep. I have a motion.
Motion for to approve resolution F two oh two.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution two zero, F two zero two, emergency repairs to well one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks Todd.
That's on my other page.
Okay, let's move on to ordinances. Uh, this is the twenty twenty four budget ordinance Y fifty three and Y fifty four. Uh, which is the property tax levy, Cindy.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So we had our public hearing on our tax levies at our last council meeting. Um, Y fifty three, we talked about our general tax levy along with our levy lift. Y fifty four is our EMS levy. Um, since that time, I've been in communication with the um county assessor about how we go about. With our general obligation, how we go about levying that because that our first principal payment is due. Um, in two thousand twenty four. So those bonds for the pool construction levy, those will be ready to sell in February. They'll go to market and we have principal payments due next year. So when I, in our public hearing, I said, I thought that would be about thirty cents. Per thousand. Well, because we were selling half the bonds. I was wrong. I had a long conversation with our bond guy, Jim Nelson, and Jim said, that's not how it works. He goes, you're splitting your project up into. One group of bonds to be sold in twenty four and one in twenty twenty five, but the financing package is actually together. So what that means is, is that the assessment needed for our general obligations bond is going to be for a full principal amount. That's a little over six hundred, what, six hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, principal and interest. Um, that's gonna be more in line with the fifty three cents per thousand we've been trying to hit through this whole pool. Uh, conversation over the last few years. Um, all the community events, we're trying to keep it at around that fifty three cents per thousand. This is gonna hit approximately there. It's hard to say now because it goes on what the final assessed valuation figures are, first of all. And it goes on what the interest rate is once those bonds are sold. So if, right now, the interest rate, I believe, is estimated at right around five percent or so. So if it goes up. Then that means um, that's gonna be a different dollar amount. But right now with. Putting both of these together in this financing package, we're at twenty five years for the repayment of those G O bonds. As opposed to twenty nine, as you recall, in the bond language, it said we could go up to twenty nine years. And cutting four years off, that would be pretty great. It would be great for the property owners here in Cheney. Also, remember that by splitting this financing package up into, if we're to get some other funding, if we're to get some other grants. That second series of bonds won't be for the full six point five million. It will be for their reduced amount if we get some other funding for that. But as of right now, it, I mean, we still have to go on that thirteen million with the first six point five being sold in February. Which means that I need to levy for six hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. So, given all that. And in communication with the county assessor's office, they said that most of my, our regional neighbors here in Spokane County. They, although it's not required, they put a little blurb in their general property tax, um. Ordinance saying that they're going to levy this much for this voter approved general obligation levy. So I've I've added some of that. I had a discussion with Mike Capon about that, about if that's what we should be doing. And he agreed, that's good transparency uh for our citizens. And so I've, I'm adding that. I'm only asking for second read on both of these tonight. And I will have that added. So when I come back to you at our next council meeting, I'll have that um, that paragraph in there for you to look at. And I'll have a better idea what our final assessed valuation is too, um, in two more weeks that I can share with you at that point. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I am asking for second read of ordinance Y fifty three. That's our general levy. And our levy lift and will also, will also be our general obligation levy. And then Y fifty four, which is your sixth of six of our EMS levy.
Thanks Cindy. Any questions for Cindy? Just a second reading, so we'll have an.
Just second read, just.
There are no questions. I would move for the second reading of ordinance Y fifty three entitled in summary form only. And that future reading be placed before us on a future date.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for the second reading of ordinance Y fifty three entitled in summary form only. And that future readings be deferred to future council meetings. Any final questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Ordinance Y fifty three, an ordinance setting the regular property tax levy for the year twenty twenty four and providing for the effective date era.
Thank you.
And Your Honor, I would also uh move for the second reading of ordinance Y fifty four entitled in summary form only. And that future reading be placed before us for, at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for the second reading of ordinance Y fifty four entitled in summary form only. And that uh, future readings be placed before council at a subsequent council meeting. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Carrie.
Ordinance Y fifty four, an ordinance setting the EMS tax levy for the year twenty twenty four and providing for the effective date era.
Thank you. Second reading for Y fifty three and Y fifty four done. Uh, the twenty twenty four budget ordinance Y fifty seven, Cindy.
Thank you. So this is our first, our first read of our, and our first look at our two thousand twenty four. Um, budget ordinance. So. In, and both Todd and Steve did a good job of talking about this, that in budgeting these beginning fund balances of money and reserves that we're bringing in. And budgeting our ending fund balances, which is our restricted and money that will flow into our next year, it has increased the size of our budget. Um, considerably over, over last year. So this particular, all funds, uh. Everything is seventy seven million, five hundred, ninety nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Of that though. Um, if you're looking at the expenditure side, sixteen million, one hundred fifty eight thousand, four hundred is an ending fund balances. Those are restricted reserves. Those are our twenty five percent reserves that we keep in our funds for our emergency reserves. Those have some capital reserves. They have some debt reserves. They have all of those in there. Um, in the packet, and I, and I, if you saw that, I also included, because there was. Um, an increase in, let me see if I can budget right there. So. What I tried to show you here was, this is our ending fund. And then this is our restricted reserves. On the left. Is basically carryover cash that will go into two thousand and twenty five. On the right, it's identified and restricted reserves. That includes our twenty five. You can see our twenty five percent reserves there and there. The general fund has their million dollars for the fire truck. There's the ARPA funds in there. And so I really wanted you to be able to see, we talk a lot about reserves. And I don't think I've ever given you a comprehensive list before. And I thought that that would be something that you might find valuable. Um, I'm happy to answer any of those questions on or off mic. Um, if you wanna call me tomorrow about those as well. Um, the other piece of that is, I also gave you um, a document that showed the twenty twenty three budget and twenty twenty four. The increase and what those basic differences were. When you talk about the nine million dollars for the purple pipe project. There's still a couple million out there for ARPA. And then you talk about a five. You know, five million dollar uh pool bond, that takes up a huge chunk of what that increase is. Um, but I mean, if you wanted to have a gander at that, I'd be happy to have that conversation with you as well. But um, I thought that the. Explanation of the increase would be important because it is such a jump this year. But this is just a first read tonight. You still have other budget public hearings to go. You, next council meeting, you have administration, Parks and Rec, uh, finance and municipal court. Um, and so at that point, um, I think that, you know, that's kind of where we're at. But when we talk about this budget ordinance, this is the time when you get to. Talk about changes if you want it. Um, if you wanted to cut, you know, the finance department, you know, hey, this is your time to do so. So uh, I mean, I'm just, but this is, you know, I I hear a lot about having input and and. You know, being able to to discuss the budget and what we're actually doing. And when we're talking about this budget ordinance, this is the time to do that. If you wanna give that some thought, then maybe next council meeting might be a good time for you to do that. I encourage you to contact the mayor if you want to make some changes that way. Or contact Mark, because if we're going to all of a sudden fund. Fourteen electric cars for the mayor's office, we're gonna have to cut a budget somewhere else. And so there's that, there's that. Figure out how to fund. If we wanna fund a new program, we have to figure out where that funding is going to come from. Either a new revenue source or a cut of a. A cut of an existing program. Um, but we're happy to have those conversations, absolutely. With that, I'm asking for the first read of ordinance Y fifty seven, please.
Thank you Cindy. Any questions for Cindy? Comments?
There are no questions. I would move for the first reading of ordinance Y fifty seven. And uh, entitled in summary form only, and that future readings be deferred to future meetings.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance Y fifty seven, the twenty twenty four budget ordinance in title and summary form only. And that future readings be placed before council at subsequent council meetings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Carrie.
Ordinance Y fifty seven, an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Cheney, Washington for the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And providing for the effective date era.
Thank you Carrie. Thank you Cindy. And that, ladies and gentlemen, concludes our action items for today. Mark, do you have any staff reports to share?
Um, making great progress on the aquatics facility. Um. The uh consultant N A C has put together uh some concepts that they presented to the park board last week on the schematics. Uh, for the pool layout, uh, which looked great. Um. If Paul uh wants to make any comments on that, he's probably seen him. Uh, we had another good meeting today where they're trying to sort of finalize. That's the schematic design. Um, hopefully within a week or so, they'll have that done. And then uh, we'll be sort of bringing that forward to start collecting feedback on. Um, Saturday is your last chance to see Eastern football for the season. Um, yeah, they haven't had a great season, but doesn't mean you need to jump off the fan bandwagon. So please come out and support your Eagles. Uh, winter sports are starting up at Eastern, men's, women's basketball, plenty of others. Uh, again, please get out and support the Eagles. And then just very quickly, and I don't wanna embarrass anybody, but I do wanna call out Cheney High Athletics. Uh, council member Hilton had two sons on the cross country team that did very well at the state. And I will also. Uh, say congratulations to the Cheney Swim Team. Uh, they had some phenomenal performances at the state meet as well, competing uh with a lot of larger schools. So congratulations, Blackhawk Athletics. So that's it for me.
And to, to add on to that, I. I don't know if this, somebody told me that one of the basketball players just signed at WSU.
Yes.
Yep.
Stinson?
Yep. That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, good call. That's it. I wanna thank Teresa. Thank you for stepping in when I was gone on. Not only council, but a couple other events that Eastern was holding. I appreciate you doing that for me.
They missed you. Everyone missed you.
And uh, also to echo Eastern Football Northern Arizona. And, uh, also echo Eastern Football Northern Arizona, it's, uh, Saturday at one o'clock. And if you want to swing by our tailgate, I make pizzas. So I'm going to make probably pizzas. Teresa, you got anything?
The band also won the big championship again this, this, since we last met. So that's pretty cool. That's all I've got.
They practiced probably more than the football team does.
Well, I'll just take a quick note, opportunity to thank all of those that participated in our recent city council elections.
Yes.
Um, whether you want or not, it's important that we have that. Who was that want to serve? I mean, that's what makes us really go around is the influx of folks coming in, going. So if you didn't win this time, you know, try again and that's, so secondly, as our budget shows, we got a lot to be thankful for. So please enjoy your trip here to the prison. That's it.
Also echo that. Thanks for everyone that cut out and voted. Um, honored to serve another four years. Tomorrow is going to be extremely busy day with meetings.
So we go to ten o'clock.
Public works and then make a one o'clock public safety and then uh, my first flat meeting at three. So full meetings.
Right, then, uh, just congratulations to Vince and the other, um, new council members and positions and that's it.
Uh, thanks Todd and Steve for your presentation tonight.
Yes.
And, uh, I hope, uh, everybody has a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to the new continuing council members as well. It'd be great to uh, partner with them. And then I got to attend the team's meeting for our final twenty twenty-three financial audit today. And I wanted to say thank you to Cindy and your team. Great job. We had a great audit and you guys did a great job. And so that was fun to be a part of and great job. Steve and Todd, you guys have lengthy ones. So it's very good and you guys do an excellent job on your budget. So thanks so much and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanksgiving. I'd entertain a motion to conclude this.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.